Okay, so with that, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special council meeting of the Flagstaff City Council. Today is Friday, it is December eleventh, two thousand and twenty. It's approximately twelve P M. in the afternoon. I'd just like to remind everyone who is listening that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice, should we so choose to do so. With that, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
City Clerk, can I ask you to verify that we have council members elect Daggett and Sweet and DC available as well?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have all three of our new council elects on the line today.
Okay, thank you. With that, Vice Mayor, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor, it'd be my pleasure. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Aslan, would you like to read our mission statement?
Madam Mayor, the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan. We are now down to item number four of our agenda. This is a discussion and direction. City Council elect in-person swearing-in ceremony and in-person council retreat. Council, before we move on to this discussion, I would like to get some clarification on a few items because I do think the clarification will help assist with understanding really why we had to have this special meeting today and understanding why we are here because there does seem to be some confusion in our community. So in understanding that I would like to go ahead and get that information so we can move forward with this conversation, I am going to first ask the city attorney, the city manager, and our city clerk some questions. Then I would like to go ahead and provide our council member elects, starting with Ms. Daggett, then with Ms. Sweet, then with Mr. DC, on the opportunity to speak on the topic for three minutes, much like we do with regular public participation. I will then bring the council or bring the discussion back into council. Now, I committed when I first came on council as your mayor in two thousand and sixteen that I would speak last after you all. However, when I bring the council discussion back inward, I am going to speak first for the third time in four years. The first time being when we had COVID nineteen, when it came to our attention in March. The second time I spoke first was to help frame the conversation with the lived black experience and the defund the police conversation. And I will speak first when we bring this back into council because I do have something that I would like to say. So with that, I'd like to start with our city attorney. Mr. Solomon.
Madam Mayor, if I may, what are your questions? And do they constitute questions seeking legal advice? Because if that's, if that's the case, I would need to go into the, you know, executive session mode if we have to do that here. If you could please clarify.
Right, because it is very unusual for me to ask you questions from the dais, Mr. Solomon. And so if for some reason any of the questions I do ask you constitute the need to go into E-session, to be very clear, I do not want to go in the E-session because I do believe that we need to make sure as much as possible that we can have this, these questions answered at the dais. If they cannot be answered at the dais, I would then suggest that perhaps you send follow-up email to all members of council regarding the legal advice. And then council always has the option, future councils, if there is still misunderstanding and disinformation, to ask you to waive or to vote to waive client privilege and have this discussion downstairs at the dais so the entire community has the right information. So first and foremost, I wanted to ask you about our charter and the mayor's authority and council rule and the majority. Can you speak to that at all?
Well, again, to a certain extent, I can obviously state what's in the charter and what's in the code on the, you know, black letter law basis, but as far as specific analysis, I wouldn't be able to go into that, obviously, here in an open meeting. That would be something I would advise to go into executive session on. But as you've indicated, yes, I could send a follow-up email or a confidential legal memo to the council. You talked about the possibility of waiving privilege, which is something I would not recommend here today. I can simply state the law as it is written and I think that would be enough for your purposes today. If it's not, you know, we can do that written legal memo later. Would that work?
Yes, that's my first question. Thank you.
You bet. So you asked about the charter and the code and the authority of mayor and council. Specific to this issue here today, again, I won't get into a lot of that, but I will say, obviously, under the charter, that the council is authorized through the charter. It's essentially the constitution of the City of Flagstaff. There's also the city code, which gets into more specific details. But when it comes to what the mayor is authorized to do and what the council is authorized to do and what mayor elects or council member elects are authorized to do, the charter states very specifically that the mayor is essentially the head of the city for ceremonial purposes, presides over the meetings and that the council is the one that eventually makes decisions when it comes to directions that the city will go. There is one caveat to that. I think I can state this specific to today's discussion. Under Arizona revised statutes, section twenty-six, three oh one, and some statutes that follow, mayors are authorized to issue a declaration of emergency and proclamations subsequent to that declaration of emergency, as you did in the spring when COVID first became an issue. Obviously, since that time, there were additions to that. There was the proclamation, closing salons, nail studios and such. And at that point, not long after Governor Ducey stepped in and curtailed your authority as well as all mayors across the state of Arizona with preemptions indicating that certain businesses could be open as essential services. And without going into any further analysis, because again, I can't do that here, the city is preempted. You are preempted in your authority as the mayor when it comes to those proclamations. That said, the governor did carve out a few things not long after that with respect to mask mandates. He gave mayors across the state of Arizona authority to issue proclamations requiring masks in their cities and respective towns, as well as more recently, some authorization to the liquor board to extend the outside premises where they serve alcohol to encourage social distancing. But that said, the proclamations issued prior to those preemptions are preempted and no longer apply because of the governor's preemptions. I hope that that answers your questions when it comes to the authority of the mayor and the council. If there's anything further, please let me know.
Well, I do have a further question, city attorney. As mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do I have the ability to cancel a meeting or change a meeting format via a social media post?
No, the rules of procedure govern the meetings. First of all, the charter states that meetings of the city council are to be scheduled at a certain time. And that is all governed by both the charter, which states rules of procedure can be put in place, which the council has put rules of procedure in place. We are governed by those rules of procedure. The mayor can call a special meeting or the city manager can call a special meeting or three members of council can call a special meeting. But a meeting that's already scheduled as a regular meeting cannot simply be changed unilaterally by you, the mayor. No.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand that. So as the mayor, which would not be an incoming council person, but as a seated mayor, so I assume it's the same for an incoming person. As a seated mayor, I do not have the ability to cancel or change meetings or the format of meetings via a social media post per our current charter and our current rules of procedure?
Not via any means of communication. That would be a council decision and it has to be made seven days in advance, actually, for regular meetings. Under the rules of procedure, no change to a meeting can be made unless it's seven days in advance and it's the council that decides that. And when it comes to a sitting mayor versus a council member elect or a mayor elect, until somebody's actually sworn in, there's no authority.
Okay, I also just wanted to make sure that I understand something. Perhaps you can help me with this, city attorney. It's my understanding that council moves forward by majority and that as mayor, when it comes to like the emergency proclamations that I issued with regarding COVID nineteen, I was able to do that. However, when it comes to setting policy, setting direction, for example, having the discussion as to what we are or not going to do with something such as a retreat, that that is done through council majority. Is that correct?
It's done through council majority and also through the city manager who puts the agenda together, but he usually does so under the direction of the city council. In fact, the city council spoke to that earlier this year in March when it suspended one of the rules allowing, you know, meetings to occur prior to the time set in the rules of procedure and basically authorizing the city manager to go ahead with that. But it's the city council that decides if regular meetings are going to be changed.
Okay, so just to make sure that I understand that, the city council, which would be all seven members, they have discussions publicly and then they decide on things like that. And it would be the majority of the city council, which would be four or more members, that would make that decision.
That's correct.
And the city manager is actually the individual who, according to our charter, sets the agenda. As mayor and as city council members, we do not legally have the ability to set an agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. Of course, you can talk to him as a council member and get something put on the agenda or go through what we call the future agenda item request, the fair process, to get an item onto an agenda. But that is correct.
Well, I don't have any more questions for you. There might be more questions that do come out with our discussion moving forward. But, city manager, I do have a question for you.
Madam Mayor, good afternoon.
So I read a statement that current members of council have asked for a special meeting. The wording was tomorrow at noon to discuss turning the virtual inauguration and retreat next week into an in-person event for council members. When I saw that, that was not what I understood to be the truth as to why we are here today. And so I'm wanting to know, I'm wanting to know a little bit more about next week. It was my understanding, and you can confirm that this is a true statement from me or not. It's my understanding that the inauguration next week on Tuesday was going to be held in council chambers, which I believe seats two hundred and fifty-plus individuals. It was going to be limited to a total of five people, which would be the judge, the individual who is being sworn in, a person of their choice, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And it was actually optional whether or not they wanted to do that in person or whether they want to do that via the internet. Then the second part had to do with a in-person retreat, a team building exercise that was going to be held at the Aquaplex, where there would be a total of ten people in the room, wearing masks and whatnot. And after the team building portion of that particular retreat, then everyone was going to go home and get on their computers to continue the retreat. Was that currently the way that the inauguration and the retreat was scheduled to be?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, council, and good afternoon, council elects. And thank you for meeting on short notice. To answer your question, yes, Mayor, the, there's a little bit of history behind both items that you raised. And they've been talked about at length over time as we prepare for these very important events. The, the, starting with the inauguration or the swearing-in ceremony, we've had a lot of discussion at the staff level and I will note, of course, the city clerk is closest to this issue because she frankly orchestrates these events and these meetings. But we have discussed this ceremony from the, with, within the context of, of course, COVID and our many restrictions that have been in place throughout this pandemic, noting our reentry plan as well. I believe when we first talked about the inauguration, we probably were in phase three of the reentry plan where City Hall was actually still opened on a very limited basis. I do think that the origin of that discussion goes back to that timeframe, which is now, you know, well over a month ago and perhaps longer. The decision or the suggestion that came of that discussion was, okay, if there's one event that it might make sense to have it be conducted in person, it would be the inauguration. Why is that? Well, because it is traditionally a city hall and specifically a council chamber venue in front of the city seal, in front of our flags and with the judge present, the city clerk and the attorney. Because of the COVID restrictions and in staying in full compliance with our guidelines, which track with CDC guidelines and others, we thought it would be a good idea to restrict the audience size and not allow it open to the public, allow one extra person to accompany the individual being sworn in. There would never be more than three or four people in the chambers at one time. Everybody would be masked and we felt pretty comfortable with that protocol. It was vetted. It was vetted with this council and I believe it was vetted with the newly electeds. And while there was some very thoughtful discussion on that, the outcome was, yeah, let's proceed with that approach and recognizing that we could be a little bit nimble in this as time marches on, depending upon the circumstances. I believe a similar discussion occurred with respect to the retreat. Now, to back up just a little bit, the retreat is a one and a half day event. It covers a myriad of topics. And was going to start off in a very traditional way with some team building exercises, kind of a means of getting to know each other. And I'm speaking of the new council along with the existing or currently seated council. And as such, it would not necessarily be public business per se, but rather a little bit of team building amongst the council members. That said, it was always intended to be an open meeting, just not one where we would solicit public comment or invite staff input or anything like that that typically occurs in these meetings and rather focus internally within the newly seated council. In that regard, it was deemed strategic and beneficial to maybe have that first part of the retreat conducted in person. Now, we gave a lot of thought to choosing a venue where we can do this, where it could be streamed so that it would be accessible for people to watch, choosing a venue where it would be safe and not, of course, not violate any of the constraints or social distancing parameters that we operate within. We thought, in outcome of that, we decided to choose the Aquaplex because there's a very big room there and the idea would be to have the facilitator who's overseeing and facilitating the entire retreat, the seven council persons inclusive of our mayor, mayor-elect, and the city clerk. And so that would, if you're doing the math, would be less than ten people in the room at one time. If public would show up and want to attend, we were arranging, frankly, to have the means for the public to sit outside in the hallway with a video streaming of that retreat so that we would not have to have more than ten people in one room at one time. The format was going to be one where each person was seated at a separate desk so that there would not be any violation of the social distancing. And we were kind of marching along with, and then as you pointed out, Mayor, that we would adjourn from that at noon on the first day of the retreat and reconvene in virtual meetings where there could be more participation and obviously a much bigger audience. And that would extend into the next day. And I'm speaking specifically of December sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, and Thursday, the seventeenth, which immediately follows the swearing-in on the fifteenth. All of this, of course, occurring next week. That was the plan for some time, Mayor, for the last, probably the last, maybe the last several weeks up until recently.
Thank you. So I want to go back to, to my original question. Thank you very much, city manager, for outlining what the plan has been for some time for this particular, for these particular events. So the statement that was made on Facebook that says current members of council have asked for a special meeting tomorrow at noon to discuss turning the virtual inauguration and retreat next week into an in-person event for council members is a lie because it was never scheduled to be a virtual inauguration and retreat. So I appreciate you leading us through what it was, what is proposed, what is currently proposed. City Clerk, I have a question for you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Very specifically, my question has to do with training for incoming council members. I was very dismayed when I saw a social media post from a prior city council member who had been on council for eight years and indeed she served as vice mayor. On, and I believe that she is an attorney by trade. And there was a statement made by her that she did not understand why this item had been agendized and why we were having this meeting today. And it seemed to indicate that perhaps that individual who had been on council for eight years didn't understand our charter and the responsibilities or the roles of mayors and council members and that we work together in majority and the legal limitations that we have. And so I wanted to see, can you please help me understand what the training will be for our incoming council members, our new council members? And also, is that training just done one time? Or do they have the opportunity to either repeat or continue their training, specifically as it relates to open meeting law, public transparency, our city's charter, and all applicable state laws?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. To start with your kind of latter question about what training is coming up for our newly elected council, we have, as city manager Clifton alluded to, we've got a retreat scheduled for next week and a half-day portion of that retreat is dedicated solely to what we're calling orientation and training. We are going to be covering a myriad of topics, including things such as open meeting law, conflict of interest, public records, meeting protocols, and the like. So that's really going to be a heavy introduction for them. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns also provides a handful of training opportunities, not only for incoming newly elected council members, but for any other elected officials that perhaps want a refresher or just want to participate in those trainings. So those happen throughout the year and they are ongoing. I know that the league had their newly elected officials training last week. It was held, it was a three-day virtual event. And then these same topics that we'll be covering not only in the retreat next week are also ongoing topics that in my history with the city and with my experience, we have these discussions very frequently with council, whether it's one-on-one. We have done, you know, again, refresher courses with the council as a whole, just depending on the need and the desire of council. I think that the city attorney can speak to some of this as well, that when we have things come up that we need to, again, provide some additional training or a refresher of things. He has made himself available and his team as well to go over these items. So there's, there's been both in-person, one-on-one. There's been collectively as a council as a whole to talk about these things. We also talk about the charter. We review our rules of procedure each year. And so I think that, I hope that that answers your question. Did I, did I hit the mark there on what you were looking for?
You did. I, I'm very confident that as we move forward, our new, our new members will be able to get the training that they need so they can be successful as members of council. Mr. Clifton, I'm going to go back to you because I believe you have a comment. I'm then going to go to our city attorney and then we'll move forward with public comment. Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, and I will be brief, Madam Mayor. When I was making my comments, I concluded by saying that until recently that had been the place. And that is, in fact, the case. I will note that in the, in the past few days, it has been very recently, there was a communication expressing concern about the in-person meetings because of the rising COVID statistics that we are now all seeing and hearing. And that should be of no surprise. And with that communication, it was, I had sent a communication around to council and to the council elects making the statement that we would make an effort to bring all of these matters into a virtual format. That in turn prompted this meeting because of a desire to, as you pointed out, Mayor, have a more inclusive discussion. And we understand that. Why are we doing this Friday rather than perhaps next Tuesday? Simply it's a logistical issue. We need to make arrangements in advance and Tuesday would be too late to do that. Notably, the swearing-in occurs on Tuesday. So we needed to hear in advance and that's why we asked for this meeting today. I want to end by noting that we at the staff level are here to serve and we're here to accommodate whatever the outcome is. We know that there are sensitivities here and that people are being precautious and we were being cautious about COVID and the circumstances. We fully understand that and we were glad to have this more inclusive discussion and try to arrive at an outcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Mayor, I appreciate that. I know that city manager Clifton had asked for the opportunity to speak first. When you were asking a question to city clerk Salzberg, I just want to make sure that we stay within the scope of the agenda item here today. The agenda item is about the scheduling of events such as the swearing-in or inaugurations, the retreat. The subject matter of the retreat does involve training, but I want to make sure we are clear on the, on the scope of the agenda item. Communications related to the scheduling of the retreat, COVID as the reason why that there are concerns that have been raised, those are well within the scope of the agenda. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. We don't want to get outside of that today.
I appreciate that, city attorney. I did ask the question of the city clerk because one of the things that we are talking about is the retreat and training. I think it's extremely important as we move forward with the training that's scheduled that includes information about open meeting laws and the roles and responsibilities and legalities of what mayors and council members can and cannot do. With that, we're going to move forward. I would ask, we have three individuals who are going to I would ask, we have three individuals who are going to do public comment today. I am going to start with Ms. Daggett. I will then go to Ms. Sweet. I will then go to Mr. Deasy. Such as public comment is, we will have a three minutes each for public comment. Council, because this is regular public comment, you will have the ability to ask questions of our individuals after they speak, each one. And then, like I said before, we will turn the conversation inward. I believe though, Ms. Solis has a question. I kind of see a hand raised, I have not seen that before. So Ms. Solis, am I correct with that?
No, Mayor, I didn't have my hand raised. Thank you though.
Okay. City Clerk, if you have the ability to control, there we go, thank you. Okay, Ms. Daggett. Would you have anything to say about this particular item?
Yeah, I do have a few things. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to be included in this discussion and shared some concerns about what I saw on social media last night. I feel that the city staff has taken great measures to ensure that we're safe. And originally, I was concerned about doing the swearing in in person, but knowing that we'll be in the council chambers individually, I am less concerned. I'll do whatever we all decide to do, but I think that it's important that we all decide what it is that we're going to do. I expect to be included in decision-making moving forward. And so again, I appreciate this opportunity.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Daggett? Not seeing any, I will go ahead and move on to Ms. Sweet.
Madam Mayor?
I apologize.
I'm sorry, it's a... Thank you so much. Yeah. Councilmember-elect Daggett, thank you so much for your participation at this meeting. I am curious what your thoughts are in terms of having, conducting the the first part of the board retreat, which is physically distance, team building, and following strict protocols as the city manager and Madam Mayor has clearly articulated. Thank you.
Honestly, I am fine with doing it in person. We just last week had our paperwork and signing up for all of our laptop and whatnot in person, socially-distanced, and with masks. And I do recognize that numbers are increasing very quickly. And, but I think I am already, you know, conducting what business I absolutely have to outside of my home, distanced and masked. And if we take the proper precaution that is needed in this kind of pandemic, then I would be comfortable.
Thank you very much, Councilmember-elect Becky Daggett, and I look forward to working with you on council.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations, Councilmember-elect Daggett. It's good to have you here. My question is, you spoke about a specific Facebook. Could you, or a Facebook post? Could you be more specific about that?
I will caution, we have to make sure that it's within the scope of a communication about the retreat and the scheduling retreat. Okay, thank you.
It was mentioned within those guidelines.
Thank you.
Well, I believe that it's been referenced previously, but there were, you know, quite a few discussions going on on Facebook yesterday and Mayor-elect Paul Deasy, who he posted to the public on his Facebook page that we were having this meeting because the majority of council members wanted to wanted to change from doing our, the first part of our retreat via Zoom or via Teams to in-person. And my feeling was that actually this meeting was, you know, about that and, but about allowing the rest of our voices to be involved in the decision-making about how we do the swearing in and how we do the retreat because we were not included in the declarative statement that we were going to go and do this all online.
So it's your understanding that the council had not made any such decision, is that correct?
That was my understanding.
And I'm sorry that, you know, you're learning the hard way, or at least our mayor-elect is learning the hard way about, yes, there are seven members of council, yes, each one of us has a vote and all decisions that are made are made by the council. Have you ever been polled, polled about your feelings by Mayor-elect Deasy about the inauguration or about the retreat?
Not about the retreat, but originally among just the newly-elected council members, this didn't include, because it was regarding our swearing in, so it didn't include the rest of the council. We had a discussion about whether we wanted to do it in person or do it virtually. And originally, I wanted to do it virtually, but said that I would go along and do whatever. But again, as I stated earlier, hearing that we're going to be one-on-one or essentially three-on-one in the council chambers, I feel much more comfortable. So I appreciate having this opportunity to discuss it so that I can get additional detail.
Absolutely. So my question around that, I believe you said we had a discussion. So was that virtually, in person, by email? And was it just between you and Vice Mayor-elect Deasy? Or were other people copied or in the same room? I'm just asking, what was the setup?
It was via email. And I believe that it was Jim McCarthy and Miranda Sweet, myself, Mayor-elect Deasy, and I think that the city manager was on that email.
Okay. And so my concern is right there. There is a huge violation of the open meeting law. And perhaps, Mr. Solomon, you could answer, if people aren't sworn in, are they violating the open meeting law?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. When it comes to council members who aren't sworn in and the scheduling details of a meeting, the open meeting law is to allow the public, the purpose of the Sunshine Laws, as they're also called, is to allow the public the opportunity to hear the council discuss and consider on actions that they're going to take in the future. If this is merely about the scheduling of a retreat or the scheduling of an inauguration, there are communications that can be had outside the posted public meeting about scheduling. You can't get into the substance of what's being discussed. So in that case, it would not be an open meeting law violation. It's just about the scheduling of it.
But what I'm hearing, it was not only about the scheduling, but the content of how the meeting was being carried out in person?
And again, the details about that, I would have to look into that further to determine whether that was actually a violation. But if it's not substantive and it's purely the scheduling details and such, again, I would need an opportunity to look at that information to find out.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
Good to be seen, thank you.
And thank you so much, Councilmember-elect Daggett. I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go to Mr. Aslan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Friday. Councilmember-elect, and dare I say, well, I won't speculate on your other possible title, Ms. Daggett. I wanted to say how excited I am that we're going to have you on board and I'm looking forward to working alongside you and collaborating with you and deliberating as a body to make some pretty cool decisions for Flagstaff in the next couple of years. I did have a question for you. When you mentioned that you were in the office doing HR paperwork with your other new colleagues, and I remembered seeing a post about that too, a picture of you guys sitting together across the table. And I can tell you, I don't think that that table is six feet across. Maybe someone could go measure it, but I don't think we need to go there. I just wanted to ask you, knowing that room and how small it is and that the three of you were in there properly masked, and I'm sure there were some other employees coming in and out, was, were any concerns raised at that time by anybody about gathering together in that space at that time? A space that is much smaller than what was being proposed for a retreat moment?
Not that I am aware of inside that room, but I wouldn't know about any concerns expressed outside.
Yeah, I don't know of any either. In fact, there are pictures posted of everyone smiling under their masks, so excited to be gearing up for this new journey we're all going to be on together. So thank you, that was my only question.
Ms. Daggett, before we move on to Ms. Sweet, I did neglect to extend my congratulations to you as a councilmember-elect for the city of Flagstaff.
I muted myself just as I said, "Thank you." Thank you.
Ms. Sweet, are you available?
I am. Can you all hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to talk today. I wanted to be sure to thank all of you for your thoughtful work on all of this, with the swearing in and the retreat. I know a lot of sincerity has been put into all of this and I agree with Ms. Daggett that I will do what we all feel comfortable and agree on. At the beginning, I will admit that when I was asked how I felt about doing in-person versus virtual, I did say that I would rather have at least the swearing in, especially for me, in-person. I feel like it is such a milestone for me. This was a big honor to be elected. However, I do understand that things change. We are in an ever-changing atmosphere and I, of course, realize that our numbers are up and this may not be something that is comfortable for everybody. So again, I would like to say that I am malleable and will do either in-person or virtual. And in regards to the retreat, it is important for me to feel like we are all, because there is more than just three of us, that we are all comfortable with doing that in-person. And again, if it needs to go virtual, I am understanding of that. And I would hope that if these things do go virtual, that in the future, perhaps we can do a gathering in-person to celebrate once the atmosphere deems that it's okay. And we would just need to work in different ways to get to know one another and do the team-building virtual. And it may take a little more effort to gel as a council, but I believe that we can do it. So those are my thoughts. And again, thank you for letting me speak today.
And also, Councilmember-elect Sweet, again, I extend to you congratulations as well. I see that there is a question from Mr. Aslan.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. And I actually don't really have a question, Ms. Sweet. I just wanted to welcome you on board as well and congratulate you as our new councilmember-elect. I wanted to say that I also am looking very much forward to collaborating with you and deliberating with you on this new council body over the next two years to make some great decisions for Flagstaff. I'm sure we won't always agree, but very looking forward to teaming up with you and working for the betterment of the city.
Thank you. I'm excited as well.
Ms. Solis, I see you have a question from Ms. Sweet.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, allow me to congratulate Councilmembers-elect Becky Daggett and Councilmember-elect Miranda Sweet for their successful election. And my question to Councilmember Sweet is, what's your preference in terms of the scheduled team-building exercise, which was scheduled for the first day, half-day of the council retreat? Would you prefer it in-person or remotely? Thank you.
So I would prefer it in-person. I think that having that time as a new council will be very important. But with the numbers increasing and the fact that I'm not the only one that will be in that room, I think it's very important that we kind of all weigh in and see what we as a council feel. Not everyone has the same comfort level. And I will say, you know, regarding what Becky Daggett had mentioned, when we did our paperwork, I did feel very comfortable. I felt things were social-distanced and safe and I believe that we could do that for the retreat.
Thank you so much, Councilmember-elect Sweet, and I look forward to working with you two at the dais virtually or in-person when it's, you know, when we all decide to meet in-person.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan, I see that you have a question for Ms. Sweet.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember-elect Sweet. I'm going to ask you the same questions that I asked Councilmember-elect Daggett. So the first one was, were you aware of these, of the post that I guess brought us to this point?
I did see the Facebook post and in my mind, I thought that maybe there was a decision made that I wasn't quite aware of in regards to what's going on.
Because in your mind, how do you understand that decisions are made by the majority on council, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, were you polled in any way? And when did that take place?
So a few weeks ago, and I don't have the email sitting in front of me, I did receive an email from Mayor-elect Deasy and it was addressed to the incoming council. I believe very Clifton was on there. I would need to go back and look. And it did ask, you know, how are you feeling with this being virtual versus in-person? Back in that email, I did express that I would like to have this in-person.
Okay.
This was some weeks ago.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your answers. And, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And so then, I would like to, as the current mayor of the city of Flagstaff, congratulate Mayor-elect Deasy. Mayor-elect Deasy, are you available? And can we hear what you have to say on this topic?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Evans. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm used to using Zoom, so. Yes, thank you, Mayor Evans and Council. Really want to urge everyone to think about what message even holding this discussion is sending to our community as agendized. Two weeks ago, council unanimously decided to go into Phase 2 restrictions, close down City Hall, close down the libraries, and now amidst the largest hospital surge we have faced yet in Arizona this week, while our state yesterday was reported as being number one in COVID transmission in the country, we are holding a special meeting today, as seen in the email, to discuss whether, for the first time since March, council members should meet in-person. I do need to note, though, because this conversation has gone a little bit in a different direction. Right now, on our calendars, I'm showing that our council meetings and retreat are shown as virtual. So, it really is a discussion in the other direction at this point. And I know this has been an evolving process, especially of late with this situation. Back to the point, as members of the governing body of the largest city in northern Arizona, we must lead by example, protect public health, and show our healthcare frontline, that we respect them and are behind them 100%. We must first and foremost walk the walk that we are expecting and telling others to do. My apologies, I just realized my video was on. The CDC Director, Robert Redfield, stated yesterday, "We are in the timeframe now that probably for the next 60 to 90 days, we're going to have more deaths per day than we had at 9/11." Council, we need to be consistent in our messaging around COVID, I believe, now more than ever. The message, though, has been, has not been so consistent. As we tell others to not take unnecessary risks, to avoid gatherings of people, to hold Christmas virtually, to protect their families and friends, we're, again, holding a special meeting to discuss whether we're, councilmembers, will be able to be taking the risk to meet in-person. Moreover, we're all discussing inauguration. I'm glad we're included, us as the councillects, to be in here. But councils vote to go to Phase 2 restrictions. Only one out of the seven current members of council would be allowed at the in-person inauguration. Only one of seven making a decision today, unless we are anyways suggesting that maybe we need to not do the Phase 2 restrictions and make exceptions so that council members can mingle with more than 10 people in the room, which is the current regulation. We should not be sending mixed signals to our community regarding the severity of COVID. I, for one, I'm having Christmas virtually with my parents, even though they live 10 blocks away, because it's a responsible thing to do, in my mind, in the midst of a COVID surge. And if council decides to hold this in-person, which I am urging you strongly to vote in favor of keeping the meeting virtual, please be aware and city staff, please prepare, that I won't be in attendance in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I do believe that there is at least one question for Mr. Deasy. Mr. Aslan?
Mr. Mayor-elect Deasy, welcome to the conversation. And I'm glad that this has become a conversation that we're having together. It's a nice conversation to have. I think you make some very interesting and valid points. I really do. And I don't dispute your numbers at all. Things are getting worse, and they've been getting worse for a while. They've been getting worse in Arizona. They've been getting worse in northern Arizona, perhaps less so than other places in Arizona. But that doesn't excuse our need to be vigilant and stay on top of our public safety concerns. So, I appreciate you raising those concerns and bringing them up. And, again, I don't dispute the underlying data that you're referencing. Largely, what I'm concerned about in everything that's happening this week, before you guys are even inaugurated, is that we have a lot of confusion being generated. And I want to, there's a Facebook post that is definitely very relevant to our conversation right now, and I'm going to read from it. It comes from the Mayor-elect's self-identified official Facebook page, and it's dated Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. And in part, it says, "In light of the extreme rise in COVID cases in Arizona, I made the call for inauguration and a retreat to be held virtually this year." And you go on to provide some data, which is great. And then you make sort of a declarative edict about council. You say, "Council will show that we are taking the situation seriously and exceeding basic precautions." Now, so there are several demonstrably mischaracterizations about this post. And in point of fact, you know, it was made in the past tense. "I made the call," as if this is a decision that was already made. Really, we're here right now in the present, and the decision has not been made. And, in fact, from what I'm hearing, I'm not even sure that we can really divine what the decision is going to be yet at this point. So, that's one mischaracterization or thing that needs to be corrected. And then, you know, it sounds like you're sort of indicating that you made this decision alone, unilaterally, yourself, and that you passed your edict down for staff to execute. That's not true. That's simply not true. And that characterization was also discussed in the comments and not corrected. So, I don't think it was just an oversight or a simple mistake. The irony, of course, is that because of all this, it is this current council that has been gathered here today to make this decision. And it's not even a decision that you're going to be a part of. So, I think in light of your campaign cornerstones of running on accuracy and transparency for government, I find all of this curious and possibly troubling. So, here's my question for you. Well, my suggestion would be that you make a correction to that post. I worry that, as it now reads, it could create public confusion as to exactly what the mayor's role is within the city's latticework structure. And I'm just wondering if you would be willing to do that, to clarify that you are expressing your personal concerns and your reasons for these concerns, but that you were not, in fact, coming to a unilateral decision and handing down orders to be carried out.
Thank you, councilmember. I will gladly make a comment regarding this issue on that post. As it states, obviously, by public records, whatever we put out is as-is and it remains as such even upon a correction. So, I will, I can add another addition on to that post. But I would like to really focus on about the in-person meeting aspect of this, because as agendized, this wasn't as much a discussion about my social media posts as it was, what are we going to do in the future? What are we going to do next week? And I do firmly believe that we need to not just meet, but to exceed our precautions that are taken. Having masks, six-feet distance, so forth, is not 100%. It is still a risk. I mean, this is, and we're at the point, a different point right now than we were even a week ago.
Well, Mr. Mayor-elect, I would like to say to you that I hear those concerns, and I agree that they need to be discussed. I also recognize that there's going to be a diversity of opinions on this and that we will come to a conclusion as a majority. And I do hope that when that conclusion is reached, that we can leave the debate here at the dais. We say "the dais" a lot. Right now, it's virtual, but it's still a very physical place for all of us. And I understand that because there are public safety concerns involved, that individuals may, and, again, I'm not trying to speculate on what we're going to decide. I have my thoughts, and I will share them when it comes time to turn the discussion inward. But we really need to respect the process and the public discourse element of this and make sure that when the debate finishes, the debate is over. It shouldn't carry on into Facebook. The public will do and say what they will, but we have an obligation to uphold the voice of the majority of council. I think that's one of the roles of the mayor. And perhaps that's one of the roles that's different from a normal council member. But really, all of us on this body need to understand that majority rules, and we need to respect that collaborative process. I just wanted to also say that I'm really heartened and glad to hear you say that you are willing to make a correction unequivocally about the mischaracterizations and the things that were said on that post that, for whatever reason, just not knowing or not having the experience or understanding of the nuance of these things, to make that correction. Paul, I really appreciate it. It means a lot to me. It's a big step. It takes effort to do that, and it's a real, honest, genuine showing of movement in the right direction. And I want to personally thank you and share my gratitude with you for making that commitment. I hope we do see that.
Thank you, councilmember. And I will just add, I am looking forward to working with you all, and I'm looking forward to moving forward next week. So, thank you. I'm looking for the future.
You know, Mayor-elect, for the first time in a long time, we have a council that I think is going to gel on a lot of issues, and that's something to celebrate. And I think you and I, I can't speak for anybody else, but, you know, and not everywhere, but on a lot of things, we're going to see eye to eye. And this is an exciting time, and I'm glad we can move beyond some of these procedural heebie-jeebies and get down to work.
I'm going to go to our city attorney, then I'm going to go back to Ms. Whelan. City attorney?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor Evans and Council. I just wanted to address, Mayor-elect Deasy, I appreciate you raising the concern about the scope, again, of the agenda item. Because, you know, any communications about the scheduling of the in-person inaugurations, swearing-ins, the in-person retreat are all within the scope of this. That's why that is a question or a discussion that can be happening right now. I just wanted everyone to have that clarification. Thank you.
And in a way, it is because of what happened that we are having to have this special meeting. I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Mayor-elect Deasy. And I get that there's a lot to learn from being in the position. And clearly, it takes time to learn those things. You know, you started off your speak today with, "I want council to think." We do our thinking in public together. We do our decision-making in public together. And that's sometimes difficult to get. But you are one of seven. And I hope you will understand that, grow to know its importance. And because of, I would imagine, your posts, we are here today. And I hope you will take your leadership, or lack of leadership, out of Facebook and allow it to be one representing the city of Flagstaff by majority rule. So, it's difficult to stop old habits and those habits of allowing misinformation to take over and fill up our email boxes. And it's a shame, because people do want to be involved. But we will make the decision today by majority of whether you're going to meet in-person or virtually. I have the same concerns as you about meeting. And, you know, so your concerns are valid. It's just about the way you went around to get that message out. So, we all learn the hard way sometimes, and welcome to the city of Flagstaff.
I'm going to go to our city attorney, and then I'm going to go back to the vice mayor.
Again, just a reminder to make sure we stay within the scope of the agenda item here today on the scheduling. Thank you.
I believe that Ms. Whelan was referring to the Facebook post that spoke directly to this particular item. I'm going to go to the vice mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And, again, congratulations to council-elect Daggett Sweet and Mayor-elect Deasy. So glad you all are with us. And as councilmember Aslan mentioned, I am stoked about this new council. We have an amazing team here, and if we can learn to really work through these kinks and work together, we're going to achieve amazing things, and that is my priority. And that is my promise to all of you, that I will do my very best to show up as a team player and be a voice that, you know, listens and works with the team. Councilmember Deasy, I do appreciate your comments, and I agree with you to a degree, right? I think, you know, a lot of us have struggled with how you've gone about speaking up through your platform. But without getting into that, you know, I was one of the first councilmembers to stop showing up at council meetings before council broke into virtual reality, right? And so, I get it. I've been vigilant. You know, I work part-time at a grocery store. So, I hang out with my parents outdoors once a week, and it's terrifying to think, what if I somehow were to transmit this to someone else, this virus, and get it myself? So, on the topic of in-person versus virtual, you know, with the inauguration, you know, I'm definitely excited to hear the conversation, and I'm glad to hear the dialogue that we've had with all of you. And ultimately, I feel like if there's a way to do it safely, and those who want to do it safely want to do it that way, in-person, sure, go for it. I won't be there. I'll be tuning in virtually. But if someone wants to do it in-person, like Ms. Sweet, I get it, and I fully support you, Councilmember Sweet, and anyone else that wants to do that, assuming we're not putting anyone else at risk. But specifically, Ms. Deasy, on the topic of our retreat, you know, given the campaign cycle and honestly how bumpy it was, I personally saw value in us coming together face-to-face safely. You know, and I'm even, you know, willing to do that myself, given how stringent I've been about not doing this for the sake of the team, for the sake of you and me, you know, us. And just kind of having that ability to have that body language, communication, and an hour and a half of a retreat, of a two-day retreat before we got into city business, I thought would go a long way. I really did. I'm curious to your thoughts. You know, my vision for it was, when I talked to city manager about this a while ago, was if we did it at the Aquaplex and we did it in the gym, you know, a big, open room, much bigger than the executive room that you hung out in for many hours. You know, if we did it in the gym, 10 feet apart, 15 feet apart, whatever it is, just so that we can be face-to-face, you know, 10 people or less, is that not something that's possible?
Thank you, councilmember. And I do have to truly thank you from the bottom of my heart how much you have really taken COVID seriously and have really been a role model for our community. I just want to first say that. Secondly, I am at the point now, within the last week, with how rapidly high things are getting. We are to the point that one new case might be one new death, because our hospitals can't handle the situation anymore, and there's nowhere to go. Arizona, we are, we are in a dire shape, and the situation we are facing now is different than a month ago, two months ago. And let me be honest, I really was looking forward to inauguration. I was really looking forward to the retreat. Our councilmember elects and myself worked really hard on this campaign trail, and that is something for celebration at the end of the grueling aspect of it. So, I just want you to realize that this also personally does affect me. Given the current circumstances, given the current numbers, given the protection of the my family and those I see, that at this point in time, I will only be myself. You you obviously will maybe be making this decision, but by myself, I will only be attending virtually at this time.
Okay, so even in a gym, very open space, you don't think it'd be appropriate for yourself, or you just don't want to risk it?
It's not, I mean, at this point, it's nothing is 100%. We still don't know as much about this virus as we think we do. And I have actually, even before this, consulted with a pediatrician. I consulted with an epidemiologist, et cetera, et cetera, before coming to this decision, as well as two COVID nurses who are on the front line. And what I hear from the medical professionals is that they did not think that this was a a manner in which we we should be holding sessions as is right now. And I would like to just throw out a suggestion. I will be there virtu- I'll I'll be able to attend virtually. Another potential option is, you know, we can do this kind of retreat too in a few months, hopefully, once, you know, myself and I can get inoculated, et cetera. Just as an option, that if, you know, we can have a retreat more in person, maybe here in a few months, and have that more, you know, building, and the time doesn't have to be just next Wednesday to to hold that kind of activity.
I like that, Mayor-elect, and I'm into that, because I think we need all the team building we can get. I know that that was very beneficial to this past council. And we had plenty of head knocking and, you know, locking up horns and and, you know, that was on a regular basis, right? But we we maintained integrity, we maintained respect, and I think it was because of that mutual respect that we had for each other that we had harnessed. You know, Mayor-elect, you are our voice. You represent the council, not only the population, but the council. And and you, as board chair, so to speak, need to, you know, work with us, right? And 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 represent us to the best of your ability, even when it's against your own values, and I know you understand these things. So I just ask that, you know, if the council does choose to host an in-person, you know, retreat, you understand why, you know, we obviously are just beginning the discussion, but we've kind of talked about quite a few things already. And that you do your best to, you know, support and empower and and lift the team through your leadership, which, you know, Mayor-elect, honestly, I want you to be the best mayor you can be for the city and for all of us, and I am going to help you reach that goal to the best of my ability, and I promise you, I will I will always rise to that occasion and and leave my ego behind. I really will. I'll do my best, at least. But um I think there is value to us meeting in person, even if it's just for an hour and a half in a big gym, just there's there's a certain value to that. I respect your decision. If you choose not to join us, if that's the will of the council, we'll see. We haven't even had the discussion, right? But yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor-elect.
I'm gonna go to Mr. McCarthy, followed by Mr. Aslan has a follow-up. I do see that the city manager will go after Mr. Aslan, and then I do have a question. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, President Mayor. I actually have two kinds of comments slash questions. One is specifically about the decision at hand, and I'll reserve those until we kind of, you know, go inward, so to speak, and have council talk about it. First, but on the first, the other question, before I even get to that, I want to say thank you to Mr. Deasy for being our next mayor, and congratulations, and thank you to Ms. Sweet and Ms. Daggett. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Just a brief comment for now. I would like to think that no one here on any side of this issue has had any bad intentions. And I want to say that I do not want to attack any people, but I do want to attack problems and issues. That's what I was elected to do on city council. So I think of this whole conversation we're having today as a learning experience. And I think the number-one takeaway from today's meeting, besides the actual decision we're going to make in a few minutes, is that we are a team, and it's there's seven members here, and no one of us, be it the mayor or a council member, has any authority to make any decision. We make decisions as a team, and I can tell you, I've been outvoted six to one on several occasions. But I accept that, and I move on. But I respect the institution. So so I guess there's really two issues today, is how we make decisions and what decisions we make. And we're gonna get to the what our decision is going to be in a few minutes, but the important thing right now, as a learning experience, is that we all get a lesson, especially the three new council members, on how decisions are made. And I respect that that it takes a long time to learn the the formalities and the informalities of getting things done as a team. So I'm gonna leave it at that. I will have very specific recommendations on what we do as far as the meeting, but I'll wait till we turn it inward. And those are my comments to you, Mr. Deasy, and the other two ladies. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan, I believe you had a follow-up comment?
Yeah, thank you. Related to all this, I do have a follow-up question for you, Mayor-elect. You know, and some some might wonder where this is coming from, while others know very well where it's coming from. So I want to preface my question to you, my request to you, with a little bit of context. You know, for a lot of us, not everybody, but for a lot of us, we've just come out of the past four years in an abusive relationship at the national level. We are this is an analogy, and a bad one probably at best, but we are abused spouses. And there's a certain amount of trauma that comes along with that, and there's a certain amount of processing that needs to happen to come out of it. And I've seen that locally, too, that this can happen. And it's it's easy and understandable to react in a way, in in a in a worried and troubled way, when we see potential abuse coming our way. And I I'm not accusing you of anything, and I don't want to accuse anybody of anything. But I'm wondering if we can get some kind of assurance from you that you will not use this platform and your pulpit, and you will not use social media to bully and beat down and dress down your fellow council members. Especially after a decision has been made, which will happen occasionally, that you are on the dissenting side of.
I think before Mr. Deasy answers that, I do believe that particular question, Mr. Aslan, is outside of the scope. We are focused today on the issue at hand, which has to do with whether or not we want to make any changes in the inauguration or the retreat that our city staff has already planned.
I understand. I withdraw the question. I I I do want the sentiment to stay out there, though, and I hope that the mayor-elect will do his part to maybe answer that question in another setting.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Aslan, because it, Mayor, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. I do believe that our city manager had a comment. And then I also have a comment, and then we will go ahead and move inward, so we can finish the council discussion. Mr. Clifton?
Yeah, two comments, both of which will be brief. The suggestion has been raised about delaying the the retreat. I would respectfully ask that we try to avoid that. I think the team building of portion of that is is, of course, important, but the orientation component of it, which involves an array of topics, are extremely important as well, and it's is the kind of information that is most beneficial on the front end of service rather than than down the road, so I would, I guess I would nudge the the council and the council elects to think about doing it sooner and maybe coming to terms as to the format. And as I mentioned at the outset, we are happy to accommodate, and we are prepared to accommodate virtually. That that has been vetted with our facilitator and with others. So on our end, we can accommodate. The second comment is one that has become obvious to me as I've listened to this discussion, and thank you all for the discussion. I think I could have done a better job of avoiding, of of taking measures that might have avoided some of the the tensions or the discomforts, I think is is a better word, in having this meeting. You know, we have been talking about COVID weekend, week in and week out at our council meetings. This item probably should have been been a little bit anticipated and slated for an earlier discussion at a previous council meeting. I I do apologize for not taking those proactive measures and avoiding this kind of 11th-hour type of discussion that we're having right now. So that one falls on me. I think I think I should have done a better job in heading this off on the front end. Thank you.
Mr. Clifton, before I make my remarks to to Mayor-elect DC, I want to just follow up with what you had to say, because I I want to tell you that I respectfully disagree with that. You are, I've had the opportunity to work with, I believe, six different individuals in the capacity of city manager, and you are for and far and beyond the best city manager that the City of Flagstaff has had. And I think that you have been very articulate. I think you have been very diligent, and I think that you have set an agenda for these two items in a way that is very mindful and that was very thoughtful. I think that the reason why we are here today, having to have this conversation, is because there was misinformation put out into the community. I think the reason why we're here today is because there was an assumption that one individual could dictate the majority of council. I think that what could have happened could have been a a sit-down, a conversation. And we did not need to have this blown up to this particular to this particular meeting that we see happening now. I think that we, as elected, and I would include all of us, right? Because everyone that is on this particular team's meeting, who has been a part of this conversation, we are elected officials. And I think that this is really about how we carry ourselves, how we interact, and and what we say. We need to be just as mindful. So the reason why this particular council had not had this conversation is because it wasn't needed. Because you, as our city manager, along with your staff, had planned something in a very caring, thoughtful, and mindful way, in my opinion. So I want to make sure that you heard me say that. Mr. Deasy, Mayor-elect DC, now you are going to be Flagstaff's next mayor, and I know that that is absolutely exciting. I can tell you that for me, it was a privilege and an honor to have been able to serve the community for the last four years as mayor. And I am looking forward to attending Tuesday's meeting and handing this council over to you. This will be something that has not happened in, I guess, the last previous cycles of mayors, because the outgoing mayor has not shown up for such a meeting. And I take the role and responsibility of mayor very seriously. I was somewhat dismayed this morning when I heard comments on NPR from the mayor of the City of Flagstaff talking about what council would and would not do regarding COVID, because we haven't gotten to next Tuesday yet. I was equally dismayed when I read statements that seemed to be very declaratory and seemed to not have the full vetting of council. I would like to tell you that I am very appreciative of the conversation that you had with Mr. Aslan, in which you said that you would be going back and adding some clarifications. And I look forward to seeing you lead the council in a way that ensures that when you speak on behalf of council, you have the weight of the full council behind you through council majority vote. So thank you. So at this particular time, I do see that our attorney has indicated that, never mind, okay. I'm going to go ahead and turn the conversation inward. I feel that we have had a great conversation with the council members-elect. Counsel, as I stated at the beginning of this particular meeting, you know, when I was sworn in, and I want to be very clear, that I'm going to make sure that all of my remarks tie directly back to this conversation. Mr. McCarthy, do you have one further comment or question for the individuals that we had the opportunity to speak with?
No, Mayor, I just have some comments about what we should and shouldn't do whenever the time is appropriate. No hurry.
So I am just going to address the issue of COVID, because we have heard a lot about COVID, and we are here because of the whole conversation about COVID. Then I'm going to go ahead and go round robin, as I always do, and ask council to weigh in with what you think the decision should be. As I always do, I will hold my my statement as to what I think we should do till the end, because I think it's important that we hear from you as a council first. That has been my leadership style for the last four years. I am, though, going to start with my COVID statement, because I think that that's important, and this ties back into this conversation that we've had. I've heard a few more remarks today that I find troubling. And so I'm gonna ask the city attorney if, for some reason, he thinks I've strayed, to make sure that I get back on point. So first and foremost, in addressing the issue of COVID-19, as that's why we are here. We are here because of the email that was going around, and because of the social media post that is talking about COVID-19, and whether or not we should have certain aspects of our inauguration and a retreat coming up in person. To be very clear with everyone's listening, I was the first mayor in the city of, excuse me, I was the first mayor in the state of Arizona to take direct action when it comes to COVID-19. And statements made that myself or the council is not taking this issue seriously, I find very troubling. Councilmember Whelan was actually the first person on council to raise the issue of COVID-19. She raised the alarm in February. As mayor, I started looking into the issue at the beginning of March. On March 13th, which was a Saturday, I got a text from Rudy Preston stating that the River Rafting outfits were gonna lay off 1,000 people within a week, because they were at a 90% cancellation. I stopped what I was doing on that Saturday. I called and I text Senators Sinema and McSally. I had conversations with both, as well as Congressman O'Halloran and Chairwoman Archuleta from Coquigny County Supervisors, asking for help for this community. On Sunday, I was with city staff while we crafted and issued a first emergency proclamation seeking economic relief for my community. On Monday, I issued an emergency proclamation, Monday, March 15th, that closed our city down, that took bars and restaurants, I actually closed bars, and took restaurants to delivery and pickup only. We did not have one case of COVID-19 at that time. Since then, I have been bullied on bullied in person and on social media. I have experienced physical threats of harm in person and on social media, and I have been threatened with legal action by state officials. I want to be very clear with everyone. While I might not be a health expert, I know a lot about COVID-19. And the continued remarks by incoming council members on Facebook pages and the continuing of encouraging such remarks in their comments, I think is very interesting. When the city attorney asked, acting on my behalf, okay, identified a loophole in the governor's executive order, went ahead and closed hair salons and nail salons. The Arizona Sisterhood of Mayors, which includes me, Mayor Gallegos, Mayor Romero, and Mayor Tolvar, we questioned, we begged, we pushed, and we fought with the governor of Arizona to get to get back a smidgen of local control, so we can implement, so we could implement a mask ordinance. I was the second mayor in this state to do so, behind Mayor Romero by nine minutes. And that was the amount of time it took me to drive from my house to City Hall to sign that document in front of the city clerk. We are here today because we are having a conversation as to whether or not this council, myself, whether or not we understand, whether or not we're paying attention to COVID. For the past ten months, I have been on the front line when it comes to COVID nineteen response in this state. So much so that myself, along with Mayor Gallegos and Mayor Romero, were turned into a political cartoon. And I want to make sure that you all overstand me when I say that. And over overstand me when I say that I personally believe it has been my stance, which has been very unpopular in some areas of District Six in the state of Arizona, that cost me my election. Even though I was running in an election, I still took this stance. And let's talk about what this council has done regarding to COVID nineteen. Especially because we are here today and there's questions as to whether or not myself or this council understand the issue of COVID nineteen. This council has not only reaffirmed the steps that I took, but you all have joined me in taking a very decisive and clear stance every step of the way. This included when the farmer's market permit was denied, and we got hundreds of emails saying that we were out of line and that we were inflating the COVID nineteen issue. By many of the people who sent us emails this past twenty-four hours. When we closed the libraries and closed public restrooms, when we closed park remadas, when we refused to issue permits for organized sports on cities' fields, when we refused the permit for the Fourth of July, when we held the Flagstaff Unified School District accountable for not following the permit they reissued for their graduation parade. I would be remiss if I didn't mention when we closed the ice skating rink. I want council to know that I'm a hundred percent grateful for this council and the way we work together in a partnership, and the way we each, in our individual roles, show leadership. Now, when we talk about the issue of council being transparent, especially when it comes to COVID and the conversation that we're having here at this dais today, what has brought us here for this discussion? At a national level, President Trump tweets out statements that are half truths, that contain misinformation, that are misleading, and in many cases are downright lies. He antagonizes other elected officials. He is a bully in the truest sense of the word. He is masterful at playing or setting plays in motion and then stepping back to watch his people from the left and the right tear one another apart, and countless hours are spent, much like this meeting we have today, in attempting to correct the lies that are spread. So, I want to really focus on what it is that we are here today and why we are here today. I want to make sure that we understand that the council swearing in was originally scheduled as an in-person activity. It was always scheduled as an in-person activity. I want to make sure that we understand that the first part of the retreat was always scheduled as an in-person part of the retreat. For if we are going to move forward and continue to believe in social justice, if we are going to say that we are going to support the truth and that we're going to honor the truth, then I need to make sure that all of us then honor the truth. The reason why we are here today is because there was a lack of transparency. An email was sent around that the community didn't know about. There's a complete lack of understanding to the city charter. There was an attempted overreach of power. There was the spreading of misinformation and disinformation on social media. That is why we had to have this meeting here today. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to council. If you could indicate who would like to go first with the decision. Well, first, I'm going to go to our city attorney. Um, and then I'm going to go- Yes, go ahead, city attorney.
Uh, you indicated that I should jump in, and again, I I I just feel like we need to keep it on the item of whether or not we're going to have in-person or um uh virtual meetings for the retreat or the swearing ins.
I realize that, city attorney. You know what? Um, I did not know that I was going to have to make an appearance at another city council meeting. You know, on Tuesday, we all said our goodbyes, and then the intent was to turn over council. Um, so I apologize if I have gone outside of the scope. That is something that I worked very hard not to do. Um, but I do feel that in saying that we are here today to have this discussion um because of everything I just said, I do think that's relevant, but I understand. Um, and so we're going to go ahead and uh turn this back over to council. If council could indicate who would like to start the conversation first, I look forward to listening to it. And then, as I said, I will uh make my comments as to which way I think council should go um at the end. Mr. McCarthy, we will start with you.
Well, thank you. I feel very special. I would just like to point out that I'm a newly elected also, so I will be involved in this uh swear-in ceremony. Um, it is my preference regarding the swear-in ceremony that I go in per- in person. And my wife Kathy would like to be there. Um, I realize there will be essentially no one in the room, except the judge and a a couple other principals. And I feel comfortable with that, and Kathy feels comfortable with that. So that's what I intend to do unless there's some decision by council saying that I cannot do that. If that's the decision of council, then I will respect that. Uh, my recommendation regarding the swear-in is that we leave that up to the individuals. If a person wants to do it virtually, I'm okay with that. I personally would like to do it in person. And so again, my recommendation is that we leave it up to the individuals that are being sworn in. So Sterling, I think that was pretty close to the subject. My uh second comment is about the retreat. First of all, I agree with the city manager. We should not delay the retreat. It's my experience after going through two of these early retreats as a new council member and after two years when we, you know, took on the new council two years ago, that it's a very important meeting that we do get to know each other. And I know all the other three people coming in, I know all of them already. But still, I think it's important that we do it as scheduled and to delay it, I think actually would be uh make further decisions in in future decisions to be unmanageable and difficult because uh there's things that will get discussed that day that are very important. So, as to the matter of should it be done virtually or should it be done in person, here's what I'm thinking. I've been in that room at the Aquaplex. It's a very large room. We can social distance, not six feet, but twelve feet. We can be twelve feet apart. There will only be about ten people or less in that room, even if we have someone to um video it. And I don't know, I didn't do an exact count. Maybe it'll go to twelve people. But I would say we'll all be at least twelve feet apart, and in some cases probably be way more than that apart. We can wear masks during the meeting. So I think based on that and based on what else is going on in this community. People are eating in restaurants. They're socially distancing. They're skipping every other table. Um, so it's my opinion that it's reasonable. So I support that we do the retreat with a very limited number of people in person. And I strongly recommend that, based on my experience of going through this type of meeting twice before. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Elect. Uh, one last thing, I would like to say that that if Mr. DC does not agree with that, uh, I totally respect that. But again, we make decisions as a council, not one person over everyone else. Thank you. Coral, I can't hear you.
Um, I I was asking, I apologize. I put it on mute. Um, I see that the vice mayor would like to be next. Council, I encourage you to indicate who would like to be next after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and and thank you, Mayor Elect, DC for for being here again. Um so, in regards to the swearing in, City Manager, I have a quick question for you. Um, are there any concerns on on your end to the safety of our staff in in this swearing in process?
Uh, may I respond, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, no concerns by staff. I I think we're taking necessary precautions. I I do want to emphasize, though, that I I view this more as a personal decision with with the the uh individuals being sworn in. Uh, we respect those decisions uh wherever they lie, and we will accommodate. We can do both. We can arrange for a virtual swearing in and have an in-person swearing in. But to your question, uh, staff, staff has no uh reservations about the safety protocol that that's being adhered to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. And on that note, I I would support uh those who want to be sworn in in person to do so, those who want to be sworn in virtually to do so. Um, these are unprecedented times, and and I think that this is assuming, you know, we are keeping our public health and safety um in mind and and doing our best. I think that this this is fine for us to do. Um, in regards to the retreat, I think the topic of delaying the the retreat was misunderstood. I think what we were trying to, I think that came from a conversation between myself and Mayor Elect DC, and I think that Mayor Elect DC had to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the topic was, you know, that we would do another one in a few months rather than, you know, delay this one. And and you'll necessarily need to respond, but basically, uh, definitely not delay this one. Uh, maybe schedule another one as soon as we can do it in person or at least outdoors, but definitely not delay this one. And that um I do think that there's value to an in-person meeting. I really do, even given the potential risk. Um, there's a way to do it safely. We can follow science. We can listen to the guidelines. We can look to the CDC, as we have been this entire time, and and do this safely. Um, I would also recommend, I've mentioned this to City Manager, that we do this at the, in the basketball courts. I know I said gym earlier, and I think that might have been misleading. The basketball court at the Aquaplex is a very large space, very open, you know, two, three, four stories tall and and has great ventilation, right, for the size of a room. And I think that would make the most sense for us if if we if we really are concerned. Those are my thoughts. I also respect each of our decisions. If people do feel um not comfortable with coming to that in person, I'm sure we can find a way to accommodate everyone's needs, but for those that do feel comfortable, I think that in person is appropriate. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it seems to be that um it seems to be that uh the city manager uh has said that we could do it in the basketball courts. He has indicated that.
Excellent, very good. I think, I really think that that's safe, you know, again, being very s- very uh particular about this myself and my own engagement in in-person things, which has been to an extreme minimum. I I really do feel, council, that that is safe. Uh, especially if we are wearing masks, you know, hand sanitizing, social distancing. I think there's a way to do it. And I think it would be a value of to, of value to the group. And and Mayor Elect, I I really do hope you think about it. I know you will, and I hope you do join us if that is indeed the will of council. Thank you.
Um, and um I want to remind people that what is being placed in the um chat is subject to public um information request. We have turned this particular conversation now over to the sitting members of council. Um, I want to um make sure, though, that because I did not, I don't think I was maybe clear about that earlier. Um, there is uh Mr. DC who has said that he was just thinking about the morning session, but the rest is important for us to do right away. Um, so we'll go back to the city and minimum members of council to continue the conversation. Um, who's next? Counsel? I'm going to go ahead and then start to call names. We've heard from the vice mayor. We've heard from Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Aslan, oh, sorry, I just got Ms. Solis. Then, Mr. Aslan, you will be out, you will be up next. Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I can, I can um defer to Mr. Aslan since you called him first.
No, you can go ahead, and then he knows that he's on deck.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, again. Um, first, um, I want to take this moment to congratulate Mayor Elect Paul DC for his successful campaign and election. And I look forward to working with you at the dais virtually and in person when we all decide to make the meetings in person. Um, I do respect and value everyone's opinions and preferences. Um, they are very important to me in making a decision, an informed decision. Um, at this point, I um would echo of the vice mayor's um um preference, that uh I also see the value of an in-person uh team building. You know, with just for the first part of the budget retreat, and then the rest will be virtual as previously planned. And as for the swearing in, I will leave it up to the the el- uh elected mayor uh Mayor Elect and the council members elect uh and make a decisions for themselves on how they want to proceed with their respective swearing in as it is their respective swearing in ceremony. So I am giving them the 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 um, I would defer to their respective decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I was practicing stepping back there by not uh putting my comment marker up. Uh, I feel like I've had a lot to say this morning, and I was willing to just sit back and listen for a while, but we each get a turn, so here we go. Um, you know, when we have this conversation, there's, there's a lot to contextualize around it. Uh, the first thing we need to keep in mind is that this entire council has worked very hard and very diligently, and so has city staff and leadership, to keep our city safe during this pandemic. Um, no, no one's qualifications should be brought into question about that. There are places where we di- disagree in nuance, and there are times when we fail perhaps to exhibit proper behavior ourselves or uh to to s- speak up when we see others not exhibiting proper behavior. Um, but there's always context to those things, too, and it's, it's hard to know. And I uh have learned um in my background not to be the first one to cast stones. Uh, and I try to embody that. The second thing is that, you know, uh, I think it's important to remember that life, you know, I I reminded of the Beatles song, uh, Life Goes On. Um, I'd bust out with some of the lyrics, but I'd be afraid Councilmember McCarthy would grab his guitar. But you guys know what I'm talking about. I mean, here, here's the thing, like, all over town, people are still going into title agencies to get their new house paperwork done. Folks are eating at restaurant. That's definitely voluntary and and not necessary and up to individual discretion. Um, but work is happening at the city. Um, uh-oh, see, see what happens when you make a, when you make a comment. Um, a words matter up here at the dais, everybody. Uh, you know, I could, I could go on and on with different examples of ways that our community is coping and persisting in spite of the the pandemic. Grocery stores, music lessons. Uh, grocery stores, music lessons, um, all sorts of things that really just can't be avoided for a year, fourteen, eighteen months at a time. We're adjusting. We're adapting. Um, we're doing the best that we can with the information that we have on hand at the time. We're learning more about this pandemic as it goes on, and, uh, we can change our, uh, strategies for, for dealing with and coping with it. And that, and we've all seen that happening over the past year, um, as we've all lived this real experience. So I don't, I, with respect to inauguration, I don't think it makes sense to cry henny-penny, the sky is falling, to have a very small, selective group of mature, um, self-decision-making adults make up their mind of whether or not they want to take the opportunity or the risk to go into City Hall and spend five minutes with their hand on a Bible or whatever and get sworn in using proper safety precautions. Um, I absolutely respect the personal decision-making process on that one. For some people, it's going to be too risk adverse, and for some people, it's, it's less risky than other things they're already doing. Um, and that's all contextualized differently for every individual person. It's really, really, really difficult to stand up and, and make a, a judgment about someone else's decision on this. But getting sworn in is important. It's meaningful. It's significant. It's, 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 it's the culmination of an amazing accomplishment, and this should be left up to the individual. Uh, you know, and likewise, I would say the judge. Um, I wouldn't, I would not ask the judge to go into this building and do the ceremony, um, against his or her own wishes. Uh, and maybe the, you know, maybe it could be done outside. Maybe it can be done a couple of months from now. But the option should be made available to each incoming Counselperson to do this in, in the traditional way or some other fashion. Um, and before I get over to the retreat, I, I did want to mention the other big thing in the room. What, what, what I hear, uh, amongst the public safety concerns, you know, of just our own personal safety and the possible spread and transmission of virus, which is on the rise and doing its worst right now, um, these are all relevant details. But I also hear Mayor-elect DZ bringing up an interesting point about the message that we send as a Counsel to the public and the, the behavior that we are going to model for others to follow. And what I have to say to that is that I don't think individual members of our incoming Counsel participating in a swear-in ceremony necessarily, intrinsically, inherently sends the wrong message. What confuses that is when we have different messages coming internally from our deliberative body and fingers being pointed and an inconsistent, um, public surface to all of this. If we are united in voice and we speak from the heart and in good faith, according to what the majority of Counsel has decided, I don't think we're necessarily sending a confused message to the public. This really isn't that confusing, because as we see, life does go on, and each and every one of us, in various ways, are doing things similar to going into a building and holding up our hand for swearing in on a daily or weekly basis all throughout the year. This should be left up to the individual to decide. When it comes to the retreat, I am much more swayed towards the direction of not having the physical retreat in person at this time. And I, I, I can go into that a little bit, um, but I, I want to say right up front as well that if Counsel majority decides that we are going to have the retreat in person, I will be there in person. Um, so I, I, I am committing to showing up, even though I think the direction I'm going to give is that I don't think it's appropriate for us to, to move in that direction. My personal safety, um, uh, level, uh, is low enough on that threshold that I, I wouldn't hesitate to join the rest of you, especially if we're even further apart than necessary. We're making sure we have great ventilation in the room, that we're following our own guidelines and not having more than ten people in the room with us, uh, physically, and that we are properly, uh, masked and distanced the entire time. And that means, like, really, I mean, no walking, you know, e- even in the space, we're walking together, we're hanging out. Um, we shouldn't be handing things to each other. We, we shouldn't be within six or, or twelve feet of each other. Uh, we should, we can model good social distancing behavior in that context by actually doing some of these things that really do become very difficult, uh, in actuality and practicality when we see folks gathering. There's, you know, I don't get me started about my high school daughter. Um, she's very good about things, but, uh, the other high school students, eh, social distancing practices tend to break down pretty quickly, um, as the gathering gets larger. So one of the opportunities we have is to really model appropriate, the genuine social distancing techniques if we, if we are to get together. But I do agree with, uh, with Counselmember, with, uh, um, Mayor-elect DZ that the, the numbers are going in the wrong direction still, and it, you know, eh, eh, I've, we know, we know from studies that it only takes up to twenty minutes of exposure, um, with someone who has the virus to reach viral load and to contract coronavirus ourselves. I think it would be pretty devastating if the retreat ended up being a super-spreeder event. And, uh, so those are the things I'm weighing, and I, I just, I, I understand the value of meeting in person. Um, I don't know that we're going to get seven people meeting in person anyway, and so the value of that is just automatically fundamentally diminished. And I do think that, you know, life goes on, and we've learned how to live virtually. You know, we talk about virtual reality, and we also talk about alternate reality. I hope we're sticking squarely in the virtual space and not moving into the alternate space, right? But, uh, I think, I, I think it would be appropriate and prudent for us to go ahead and skip the in-person gathering at the Aquaplex for now. But, uh, it would be something that I would participate in if asked to do so by a majority of Counsel. And I believe that we should reschedule it for as soon as possible. Um, even amidst the pandemic, perhaps there is going to be a time when the numbers are less, and we're walking back down through that, the rungs on that ladder. Um, and we can, we can understand that the risks are minimized, um, and that we can all do this safely together, eh, uh, as a unanimous group.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan. I need to go to, uh, Mr. Odegaard.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I just want to start off with, uh, saying congratulations to the newly-elected, uh, the Flagstaff City Council. Um, and it's, as you know, it's such an honor, um, to be elected in our community. I would, um, like to follow up with Mayor, what the Mayor said earlier, um, that this Counsel, um, especially for the City of Flagstaff Council, has been a leader, uh, in our, our state concerning, uh, response to COVID. Um, we've been united, uh, with our Mayor, um, some hard decisions that had to be made. Um, and, and our community has respected us for that, um, being united and on the same message concerning, um, the city's response to COVID. Um, and I'm really proud of that fact, that the decisions we made were always in the best interests of protecting the community. Um, also wanted to say also with the, what Mayor said earlier, I'm surprised that I'm here today, um, gone on two hours now, uh, for a meeting that the result of having this meeting was because of misinformation and conspiracies, um, directed, um, at this Flagstaff City Council, um, which is unfortunate, um, to be here because of that. Um, as far as, you know, swearing-in ceremonies, um, you know, we just had a new Senator, Senator Kelly, uh, sworn in. Such a personal moment, um, with another Senator standing next to his side, uh, with Senator Cinema. Um, and so, you know, if my direction is anyone that's just been elected would like to have that same type of experience, go ahead. Um, and the, the City Manager just laid out, uh, what the protocols will be of five people in a large room, um, and to be able to experience what that honor of being sworn in to represent our community is, um, is precious, and something that's not to be forgotten, uh, for sure, and very memorable. Um, so if they would like, so that's my direction concerning the swearing-in. Uh, those that would like to, um, participate with that protocol that the City Manager laid out, um, um, I'm not going to hold that, um, to prevent anybody from doing that. And then, um, and of course, they can always do virtual if they would like to, that choice. Um, as far as the, um, meeting, uh, building the new City Council together, um, I would highly recommend that they go forward what's been proposed by the City Manager. Again, um, ten or less people in a room, and it's very important that this takes place, especially after today's meeting of two hours and what we've learned, uh, what's been happening the last several days here in our community. Because, you know, we as a community and, and, and those as electeds have to have trust and respect. And, um, that's very lacking right now, as we've heard from a couple of the newly-elected. Um, so my suggestion is, in my direction, um, is to go forward, um, with the protocols that's been placed from the City Manager, to build that connection for this body to go forward and be successful for the next couple of years. So, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And again, congrats to the newly-elected.
Thank you, Mr. Odegaard. Ms. Whelan, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Um, well, I, I believe with the rest of my colleagues that concerning the inauguration, it should be a choice. Uh, I believe we can do that. We're reassured that, that, um, it can be either way, virtually or in person, in a very safe way. Um, and so I would support that. Um, as far as the team building, clearly, I agree with Counselmember Odegaard, uh, just by us sitting here, um, and, and talking about these difficult things. Um, there needs to be team building. There needs to not just be one team-building exercise, but many. I think we have a Mayor-elect, and sorry to say, Mr. DC, but you have gone rogue. And your relationships with your Counsel are on thin ice. Um, just by the set of emails that you've chosen to set out and correct other Counselmembers is, is beyond, um, beyond my thinking of what a Mayor should be. And so I think with that in mind, that I do believe that it should be done virtually, but I should, I believe that it should be done time and time again until you begin to act as a collective unit that you were elected to act as. Thank you, Mayor.
I see you, Attorney.
Never mind. I felt we were straying down the path again, but I think we're back on. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to, um, Mr. McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy, briefly?
Um, I just wanted to point out, when I was saying we should meet, uh, in person, I only meant for that morning meeting, and then as suggested by the City Manager, that the meeting in the afternoon and the next day would be on the internet.
Okay. Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, so one comment that I had here that I was going to suggest, um, and failed to do so at the end of my time to speak. I, I would ask all of us if we could do our very, very best, starting right now, to fully quarantine before entering our retreat space together. They're going to have to be exceptions to this, especially if someone, um, does their swearing in. Uh, but I, you know, that helps to prepare and model good behavior as well. If we're going to do this, uh, it's something I'm willing to do, even though I'm recommending we don't do it. Um, with Counsel Direction, I think it would be a, a nice thing for us to all rally around, um, being very much isolated and on our top best quarantine modeling behavior from now until Wednesday morning, if that makes sense. Just as, just, just throwing that out there as a suggestion of, of one way we can, um, approach this in addition to all the other, um, cares that we're going to take.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe everybody has weighed in on, on this topic. So, um, it's my opportunity. So first and foremost, um, I think that, um, I am fine with us continuing with the original agenda that our City Manager, um, laid out for both the, uh, retreat and for the, uh, swearing-in of Counselmembers. Um, if, uh, Counselmen, um, Ms. Whelan?
Mayor, before going on, could you, uh, just repeat the, the number or where we're at number-wise?
Well, I do believe that this is one of the rare opportunities that I might have to, um, uh, actually break a tie.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, um, the way I understand it, our Vice Mayor has said with, um, the given precautions, um, that he would like to see, um, everyone has seemed to indicate, we'll start there, everyone has seemed to indicate that when it comes to the swearing-in, that is a personal choice, and, um, uh, that can be done according to the individual's preference. Um, when it comes to the in-person retreat, the Vice Mayor has indicated that he would like to see it, uh, in person with all the safety protocols, but in the gym, um, um, at, at the Aquaplex. Mr. Aslan has stated that, um, while he would prefer not to, um, um, have it in person, he will defer to Counsel majority, and he will attend. Uh, Mr. McCarthy has said that he would like to defer to be virtually. Uh, Mr. Odegaard has indicated that he feels that this is, um, definitely our Counsel, our incoming Counsel needs to have this retreat, and it should be done in person. Uh, Ms. Solis has said that, um, it should be, uh, done in person. You seem to have indicated that, um, while you believe that it is needed, it should not be done in person.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, and I, I really apologize for interrupting your speak. Um, you know, I, I, I need to reconsider this because, um, I think there's, there's meaning and, um, in meeting in person. And so I'd like to change my vote that the, um, team-building exercise be done with all the safety precautions in, intact and in person. Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry for, um, the confusion.
Thank you. Um, Mr. McCarthy, did you have a comment?
Um, I believe that if I heard you correct, you misstated my I believe that if I heard you correct, you misstated my position. My position on the retreat is that it should be done in person.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, because I did not have that down appropriately. I appreciate you correcting me. Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mayor, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to make sure we're clear. There, there are no, there's not a vote today, there's simply a direction to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. I mistakenly said vote. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
And so what I wanted to, to say is, I guess, a few things. First and foremost, I want to make sure that I articulate the difference between the fact that we as a council have been meeting virtually since March and this proposed retreat team-building exercise. You know, one of the reasons why, when I sat down with the city manager and the city attorney and then council sat down and reaffirmed that, that we should be meeting virtually is because of the size of our actual city council meetings, right? So it's not just the seven of us and our city attorney, clerk and city manager. It's the entire leadership team, it's the entire City of Flagstaff, it's all the department heads, which is why we meet in council chambers that can hold up to three hundred people. And we also have the entire public there as well. And so understanding the need to social distance and our inability to do that, that is why we went to a virtual, virtual realm. I do believe that, that the ten of you, meaning the council body, as well as the city, as the city clerk, I believe, the city manager and your facilitator can have a social responsive team-building retreat in something that's the size of a gym. And I also think it's important, because it's been stated several times by council members-elect as well as current council members, that we as a council need to model what it is we want to see, right? We need to be able to show the public what we expect for them to be doing so we can help address the issue of COVID. We know that there are meetings currently taking place in our community that perhaps are not showcasing what it is that we need to see. So I would think that our council would be able to have a ten-person retreat in a gym, social distancing with masks on, that would be able to showcase that if you are going to have an in-person meeting, this is really how we believe the meeting should go. I wanted to, I'll go back to what Mr. Aslan said. I do think it's important that individuals, council members, do practice, you know, their self-quarantine, that you all are wearing your mask and that you're doing what you need to do to show the public what it is we'd like to see on a consistent basis. Definitely if you are planning to move forward, and I would recommend that you do with the way our city attorney has outlined both of these events. I would also say that I think it would be great if there was a thermometer there to make sure that we check our temperatures as we, as we go into that ten-person retreat. I would also suggest that there be no coffee, donuts and all the rest of that kind of stuff. That that could be something that if you need coffee, tea, water, you pack it in and you pack it out. That way, that eliminates any need for any staff members to provide that as well as any comings and going. So that would be my direction. I am going to go to our city clerk to make sure that she heard what it is that I believe that I've heard now as regards to direction on this particular item.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have heard that a majority of the council would like to have us move forward with an in-person retreat for that first morning portion of the sixteenth at the Aquaplex in the gym. And we will endeavor to fulfill that direction.
And that the swearing in would be done according to what it is the council members-elect are interested in doing.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. We have heard that as well. We will have both options available.
Okay. And so in closing out this meeting, I would just say, first and foremost, it was absolutely, you know, an unexpected surprise to be able to come back and lead the council through yet another council meeting and agenda item. I appreciated the opportunity to do so. This was the first time I can remember in twelve and a half years that we had the opportunity to have council member-elect join the council at the dais. And that was truly something that was surprisingly, surprisingly fun and interesting. And, you know, perhaps that is a tradition, a new tradition, that future councils will continue having these types of meetings with council elects prior to the turning over of, of, of the council. I am looking forward to tuning in on Tuesday to open that meeting and to hand this council over to council, to Mayor-elect, Mayor-elect DC. And it is going to be absolutely wonderful to see how our new council, with some new members and some old members, how you all gel as a team and work, work together to carry forth council majority policies and procedures. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council.